Up and running, YouTube is up and running.
We are almost on YouTube.
Okay, when we're ready, let me know.
Mayor, we're live on YouTube.
Okay, very good. Well, in that case, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's the November 16th, special meeting of the city council, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coomer.
Here, here.
Councilmember Carling.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. All right, this is an opportunity for the public to address the city council regarding the special meeting item. Is there anybody that wishes to address the public?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, very good, thank you. Seeing no comments, we are going to go into the special meeting item. This is the interview for planning commission applicants. So with that, I would like to invite Thomas Cox into the interviews.
Mayor, we have Stephen Dunbar first.
Oh, I'm looking at the agenda and it says, Thomas Cox, okay. Let me. Okay, so we are reordering the number here, all right, let's go for Mr. Dunbar.
I'm gonna go ahead and move him over.
Okay.
Hello.
Stephen, how you doing?
Just fine, thanks.
Good, glad to hear it. So, welcome to the Planning Commission interviews, certainly appreciate your interest. So with that, is the first question out is, what do you see as the primary responsibility of the planning commission?
The primary responsibility of the planning commission is to look at development applications, general plan updates, and things of those types, and make recommendations to you about what they feel is the most appropriate for the city, to interact with the public and get their input as well. So primarily those, primarily that. Mostly advisory role, it does sometimes make decisions that can be appealed, but that's.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So I'm up next.
Yes. Mayor-elect Werner.
Stephen, how you doing?
Good.
See it. Thing isn't working here, I'll have to get that figured out. I'll figure it out when I ask this question. What is your understanding of the city council goals and priorities? And how do these help inform the work of the planning commission?
So the city council has a number of goals that they update every two years, things like asset management and downtown. A lot of these things have to do with upcoming development, that private developments. Some of them have to do with plans that we put in place many years ago. And the planning commission's responsibility is to take a look at those developments and make sure that they satisfy the plans that we put in place and make recommendations to you that that they're appropriate. In terms of how they intermix, I mean, what can the planning commission add, really? We're looking to really focus on those goals so that that they're as the primary goals, but lots of other goals in the background. So that it can really benefit the community at large.
Okay, thank you. And what I should say is, we're going through these questions, and John, you can point it out too, is that if any other of us want to elaborate, you know, on it, then somebody else can chime in as well, is that?
Very open and organic, just a conversation.
Right, because we have the questions randomly assigned to council members, but if somebody wants to explore something, I think they should feel free to ask some amplifying question.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, Stephen, I'm fine with that, and go on to the next then.
Customer Carling?
Yes, thank you, Steve, welcome. So over the next few years, the city is going to be facing a number of different issues as we move forward. Now, what is your perception of some of the primary planning issues that face us as we approach these issues over the next few years?
In terms of priorities or in terms of actual plan updates?
I think probably a little bit of both, but I would focus on the, what you think the priorities might be.
Okay. I mean, the council priorities are there, but the biggest thing is, of course, that we're running into the general plan update coming very soon, you know, the 2025 edition of it. And the other thing happening simultaneously is the housing element update with the new Rena numbers that are coming down from the state. How does that fit in with our priorities? I mean, and my personal priorities even. I'm a big climate activist, and reducing emissions is a big priority of mine, and how that interacts with the built environment is something I'm pretty happy with talking about to everyone. I imagine you've seen it in some of my emails to you in the past. And how the housing element interacts with that as well. Because people who can live and work in the same community are not driving very far. So I'm a big, you know, the circulation element of the transportation or of the general plan update will be a particular interest of mine. But all these things work together to inform you about your decisions.
Yeah, the housing element, I think, is an important one. I mean, you know as well as I that we are going to get some new Rena numbers, and housing is a real bone of contention amongst many of the people that live in the community. Well, how do you think, is there another way we can approach that? That we haven't been doing just the right way? How do we get everybody engaged? Around housing?
Or to agree?
I don't think there is ever going to be getting everyone to agree. But the best thing we can do is get everybody to understand the trade-offs. Because the numbers are going to come down. And if, and you know, the one that people like to use as a bludgeon is, well, the state will just tell us exactly where to build stuff. Then maybe there's some risk of that, but I don't think that's the primary thing. I think we are going to have to make the decision before that about where we want housing to go. And the trade-offs with placing them in downtown, placing them within our, you know, the other areas of the community, creating new communities like the Isabel Neighborhood Plan and other stations that might come along with Value Link. There are trade-offs with all of those. How much disruption it provides to existing people versus how much integration those communities have with the existing community? How many resources like grocery stores and parks those new communities have, or how much our existing parks need to be expanded to meet them? I think that's a lot of it. The other trick is that, just frankly, the way that property taxes work in California, the people who are moving into new facilities are paying a lot higher property taxes, so they are in a sense, paying their fair share, and getting people to understand that they are paying their fair share is something that we haven't been talking a whole lot about. And I think we could expand on a little bit more, and see like, look, these people are investing in our community, and we can take that investment and make your lives better too. I think that's the way I like to frame it.
That's good, thank you.
Customer Cooper, you're on mute.
Good, and Stephen, good to see you as well. What are some of the unique characteristics that helped to define Livermore? And what is the commission's role in preserving or enhancing these defining features?
So we, I've only been in Livermore for two and a half years, but I have really come to enjoy the many parts of it. The features that I particularly enjoy are obviously related to biking in particular, I love that. But we have a lot of policies that have kept all these wonderful open spaces that I love so much in place. You know, we have the scenic corridor policy, we have the urban growth boundary. We have all these wonderful policies to keep our wine growers happy. So those are some of the things that I particularly really enjoy. There is a really strong sense of community here, people get involved, and that's what's helped me integrate so fast is I meet other people who get involved and love the community and learn new things. There's also a lot of history in the parks and in Stockman's Park and all the things throughout downtown that you don't, you know, as part of the asset management plan, it's like, you don't even realize the city even owns that or deals with it. And getting more people to explore those would be fun, too. I'm not sure I got the second part of the question, if you, if I didn't answer it completely, go ahead and ask it again.
Oh, I think you did pretty well, thank you.
Customer Member No.
Okay. Ah, yes. Downtown, what are your thoughts about the continued development of the downtown? What issues exist and what improvements, if any, may be desirable going forward?
Well, as.
And oh, and hi, Stephen, good to see you.
I was involved in the downtown even before I moved to Livermore. I attended some of those meetings in 2017 before I was there, and other people have been at it a lot longer than I have. I like, what issues exist in downtown now? Well, we, you all have decided on that, the downtown specific, the Lucky Site specific plan, I should say even more particularly, about what we're going to do there. I think that's a, it's an excellent starting point, but there's even more. We've had that downtown specific plan since about 2003. And not all of it has really come to pass. The one that sticks in my mind forever is seeing that new bridge installed over the bike, over Marietta, and not really having any place for it to go right now, because those properties to the east haven't developed yet. Again, it sort of comes back to housing, because housing is going to be a part of our downtown element, no matter what we do. Getting people to understand the trade-offs that are involved in having those redevelopments is really important, and that conversation will have to continue constantly. It's a matter of planning commission, it's a matter of how much money it takes to maintain over time. As you know, I'm a big cyclist, and I'm looking forward to seeing crosstown cycling routes, but also just a general concept of transportation safety, even beyond cycling, is really important to me. And I think we have a lot of design details that we implemented in the 2018 Active Transportation Plan that haven't come to fruition, just because we need to balance the budget right now. So keeping that in mind in the future.
All right, thank you.
All right. So, how would you meet the community's goals in reviewing site design and architecture of new development proposals?
Yes, and in particular, it's about transferring those goals into policies and into details, in particular for me. Because we have a lot of excellent goals, safety and environmentally friendly and affordable and full of job opportunities and all these things. But sometimes our policies get a little fuzzy when we get down to the policy level. Sometimes we have very concrete policies about how much parking we need exactly. And sometimes we have more vague policies like, and I'm just going to use biking again as, you know, shall shall encourage biking to the degree possible. But don't exactly have all those sub standards figured out. When it comes to actual developments, I think I have a good record already of comments to planning commission that help us move from those goals to actionable items, and I'll give you an example. When the Vineyard 2.0 development came up to counter to planning commission, there were two things in particular that I talked about. There was a goal of maintaining safety on streets, and I talked about reducing the lighting glare onto the street based on the type of light fixture that they had installed. And then particularly for that type of development where we have a very low amount of parking, because it's very low income, affordable development. Having secure bike parking that you didn't need to take up into your apartment was also very important. So that's, those are some examples of translating goals into policies into development pieces that I think I would bring to the table.
Hey, great, thank you. Mayor-elect Werner.
I'm up next. Please identify a few of the plans, codes, and standards the city uses to regulate development, and the role of these documents in the review process.
So, the general plan guides all. The general plan has been modified over the years through various specific plans, the downtown specific plan, the South of Livermore specific plan, Isabel Neighborhood specific plan, very recently, the Active Transportation Plan, and city initiatives, you know, Measure D, the scenic order plan, things like that. There's zoning, which tries to be in sync with the general plan, but is more specific about what's allowed in any particular area. And then there are city, sort of more the staff level development standards that are applied to that zoning code that tell us how we fit in all those pieces together. Give me the second part of your question again.
And I think it was, how do these, what's the role of these documents in the review process that the planning commission goes through?
Right, the planning commission has to know all of them to some detail. Usually the staff will make recommendations on the lower level details, and the planning commission is going to decide whether those details are in sync with the plans at a broader level.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Customer Carling?
Yes, thank you. So Stephen, what experience you have that has prepared you, if selected, to serve on the planning commission?
Well, for a short time, I've been on your very own asset management outreach, which has been a fun process, and I think I've made some contributions in there that people have been satisfied with. I have a degree of experience in public communication through Bikies Bay, being a board member there. In, and it's a lot, a lot more than just the design details, it's really getting community consensus and jumping in and being unafraid to talk directly with people about why something was decided, what documents. It's not just me or anyone on the planning commission, if you, so choose me, that that is making these decisions. These decisions were often made long ago, and we're just implementing them. So those two pieces in particular, I've also just a history of going to a lot of planning commission meetings and making actionable recommendations. And I'm just trying to get involved a little bit earlier in the process to make it even more efficient, honestly. I don't like to be the one coming in with things right at the last minute, looking to change. I want to see the very best plans put forward, so we can make the best plans for the community.
All right, thank you.
Customer Cooper.
All right. Planning commissioners may have a diverse range of personalities and opinions. Please describe your approach to dealing with fellow commissioners that you may have a and how you may handle a disagreement over a project.
Yeah, a lot of it is where I'm coming from, what, what goals or policies are the things that I'm, are my goals, or all the community's goals? And why do I translate those into my opinion? I think I have a pretty good relationship with, with even a lot of people that I disagree with. Some of you have told me that I'm like the nicest next door person that exists. Because, and people do get heated, they're very passionate about our community, and that's not a fault for them most per se. And so being respectful is really important. I think the best, the best answer to that question is just my own history.
Customer No.
Oh, I am off mute, look at that. So, time commitment, what's your understanding of the time commitment that you need to serve on the planning commission, and how do you think you'll be able to meet that? Excuse me. Excuse me. Bad timing, bad timing.
Okay, so time commitments for the planning commission. The time commitments for the planning commission are generally Tuesday evenings, seven to late, as long as they go. And then there are other development meetings that happen in the community, or developers bring things forward, and there are training meetings that happen. There are sort of pre-meetings that happen to say, here's, here's what's coming, here's, and here's the agenda packet. And then you have to be prepared to read the agenda packet well in advance and have your questions formulated and sent in in advance. So that's the majority of the time commitment. In terms of how I'm meeting it, I recently ran for a different office that would have required even more time commitments. So I do have a lot of commitments going on with Bikies Bay, but I feel confident that I'll be able to accommodate them. The other thing for me personally is that gilling starts very early, and so sometimes late meetings can be a problem, but I've already kind of worked through that, so. Good there, too.
All right, thank you, and I apologize for the inconvenience needs.
So all things considered, why should we pick you?
You should pick me because I have really come to love this community in the time that I've been here. And I have a history of honest working relationships with a lot of the community. And I have a commitment and a skill set that will mesh nicely with the existing planning commission in my transportation focused world, but branching out into all the various things that the planning commission does. And I have a history of making actionable recommendations to the planning commission and hope to continue that as a commissioner.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Stephen, here's your turn. What questions, have any questions for us?
How interesting. Not really in particular, you guys are, you guys listen to or read a lot of my emails as it is, so you're already know where I'm coming from for a lot of these things. Thanks for all your service, I've said that in the past. And thanks for the opportunity.
Okay. Okay, well, great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, and nice evening.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Bye.
Right. So let's see, he is, are we closing him out?
Mayor, he has, he has left. He has left, and we are waiting for
Oh, there we go.
Mr. Cox to join us.
Okay.
So do we have any downtime between these things, or are we staying on the half hour?
You got five minutes.
But we don't have.
I wanted to allow at least 20 minutes for questions, and then if we had any follow-up, we had another 10 minutes, so that one ran a little bit over 20.
Okay, no, I was just wondering, between these things, between the end of the interview and the start of the next, we don't have any time to talk or anything, right? Because we're still on live and public.
Yes, I believe so.
And I believe that we'll be on live and in public even through the discussion, is that correct?
Of course, the main discussion takes place on the 23rd.
Did you miss that nuance?
I did, actually.
We're not selecting tonight, it's next week.
All right.
It's just a strange times.
Okay.
Mr. Cox has joined us whenever you guys are ready.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody up, everybody ready? Start a little bit early. All right. Bring him on in. Good evening, Mr. Cox. How are you doing tonight? You're on mute.
Always, right? You have to start off the call on you to, for the count, I think.
It's all good, great, well, welcome. Thank you for zooming in with us tonight and for your time filling out the application and volunteering to apply for the planning commission. So we've got all of our councilmembers here tonight, and I get to start out with the first question. So, what do you see as the primary responsibility of planning commissioner?
I believe the planning commission is tasked with helping Livermore grow in a responsible way, preserving the positives of the city, and also allowing for equity, economic growth, and environmental concerns all at the same time. I have a background in architectural design, landscape design, and sustainability, and those are all concerns that I would bring to the discussion, should I be fortunate enough to be part of the commission.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Hey.
Mayor-elect Werner.
Hi, Thomas, Bob Werner. Question two is, what is your understanding of the city council's goals and priorities? And how do these help inform the work of the planning commission?
I don't, you know, I don't recall all of the points from the city council's goals, but it's, I feel very aligned with my thoughts, that it's responsible growth, it's providing for the community. And I believe that the planning commission serves as a, you know, advisor to the council. And I also like to hear your thoughts on how the, how you feel that the planning commission should work, or what you see those roles as, as far as an area of expertise, or helping to inform you as you're making those decisions. But I think it's somewhere that we take those goals and filter them through the lens of experience and help provide guidance as the council makes those decisions.
Okay, well, thank you.
Customer Carling?
Yes, thank you, good evening, Tom. How do you perceive the primary planning issues facing the community over the next few years, and how should Livermore approach these issues?
From my experience, Livermore, specific issues are the Isabel Avenue area and the East Avenue corridor. You know, I think it's really a matter of balancing what is going to be best for the city and what is best for people today as well as in the future. It's making informed decisions, and obviously we don't have all the answers, but getting as much information as we can and going and going from there to to move forward.
You didn't mention housing, what are you thinking about that?
You know, frankly, I was surprised at the meeting, I tended to hear kind of how few housing units are developed each year. Obviously, I think it's important to have housing for a wide range of incomes, housing opportunities for young families, for you know, people we call essential workers these days. But I need to understand a little more about what, what types of projects are expected. And I think we don't want to take over, you know, some precious space with more and more subdivisions. Something like smart housing, but, you know, good housing is important to consider as well. But it really depends on where those areas are, you know, the site might be more suited to one as opposed to another.
Thank you.
Customer Cooper.
Before that, I actually had a question. Sorry, my internet went a little unstable, so you're not going to see my, my face, which is probably just as well. You mentioned the, the East Avenue corridor, and I'm wondering if you could say a little bit more about what, what, what your thoughts are on that? Or where that comes in with regard, how that fits in with the planning commission?
Well, I'd be curious, you know, to look at or to understand what what are some of the goals of the city as far as making it safer for pedestrians, making it a more welcoming throughway or corridor into the city, improving what is there as far as the infrastructure for pedestrians, for bicyclists. Those are all things I imagine would be happening, but I'm not too familiar with them just yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Customer Cooper.
Hi, Tom. What are some of the unique characteristics that helped to define Livermore? And what's the commission's role in preserving or enhancing those defining features?
Well, to me, you know, clearly, the historic agricultural aspect of Livermore is very important. It's, you know, part of the beauty of this, of this city. So it's, it's something that's important to take care of and to foster. I think it's almost important to preserve the character of downtown. I mean, that was a big interest of me moving to Livermore is that there is a, you know, an urban core that is historic and, and great to spend time in. Given pandemic. is historic and, and great to spend time in, given pandemics aren't taking place. Obviously, there's also, you know, views to the hills that are important to keep, keep preserved. You know, I have some experience with that in Austin because we had view corridors that were part of all planning decisions anywhere in the city. And I understand there, there are some limits on that here as well, both on building heights and where things can be built.
Thank you.
Okay, customer Monroe.
All right, and you just get to the question. Speaking of downtown, what are your thoughts about the continued development of downtown? What issues exist there? What improvements may be desirable going forward?
Well, I think parking is always an issue. There, there are good opportunities for parking currently, but it's not obviously the ideal configuration or design. It's basically, you know, behind area of downtown that I'm thinking of. Obviously, safety pedestrians, I guess I'm curious what our goals would be long-term relative to social distancing requirements and other things like that, because clearly it affects how much space people can have or should have when they're in a, in a public space like that. There's obviously the historic character of the buildings there. There's the massing and what I would call human scale elements that are obviously important as well, because you want to have the best possible quality of streetscape, especially downtown.
Okay.
Um, I, I actually have a follow-up question, which is, as you're thinking about where downtown is, how, how do you think about defining that area?
I guess the first thought comes to mind is, as First Street, but thinking a little more closely, you know, it obviously expands several blocks. Thinking of the historic street is, I guess foremost to me, but you know, there's a mix right now of underdeveloped spaces and busy areas. And I think it'd be important to look at how to, how we want or how Livermore wants to grow, whether you focus on specific zones, specific nodes, or whether you're, you're giving an equal brush to the whole, the whole area.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, so how would you meet the community's goals in reviewing the site design and architecture of new development proposals?
Well, checking the design guidelines would obviously be the first, to me would be the first choice. I don't want to say obviously. But reviewing what the standards are that have been put in place by previous commissions, by the city council. That is to me, you know, the first sounding board. There's also my own, you know, feelings about streetscapes and quality of design relative to elements that contribute to entry and scale and all things and things like that. Obviously, so you also would need to check your land use, obviously, and, and things of those, that nature.
Okay. That's good. The question I have is, if you could please identify a few of the plans, codes, standards the city uses to regulate development and the role of these documents in the review process. I think you began to touch upon some of those in the previous answer.
Sure. Well, my understanding is there are design guidelines that have been put forth, which would regulate elements from architectural design to, to buildings to details. There's the general plan for Livermore, which I understand is going to be redone in the next couple of years. There is the land use plan or zoning that is done by the city as well. Those are the first ones that come to mind.
Okay, and the part of it is how, how are they used in the review process?
Sure. Well, that's, the first step is to check, excuse me, against those existing guidelines. And if they meet them, you know, designers, I've been on the other side, designers have those rules and can know what should be allowed and what shouldn't. And I believe it's the planning staff that will initially take those documents and compare them. Planting Commission, for the most part, I understand is, is when there are situations that are not necessarily covered by those documents or whether there are people that seek exceptions to, to review those situations. You know, the general plan is obviously a goal for how Livermore should develop, including setting the limits on, on the incorporated boundary. And the land use obviously determines what building functions are permitted where.
Okay, thank you.
Who's dog?
We have two. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Can you share with us what experience you have that has prepared you to serve if you were selected on the planning commission?
Sure. I, I studied architecture as an undergrad and then began to work for various firms in Austin doing commercial work. I ended up going back to school to get a master's of architecture. And while I was there, I was interested in sustainability and, and the profession as a whole. So I continued and got a degree in landscape architecture. I graduated at a terrible time, so it took a few years to find some work, thanks to the, the recession. But I, I went to work for a landscape firm was my next full-time job and was involved in everything from the planning of a large several thousand acre development to the street design to parks for that city or for that development, excuse me. Some smaller parks for the city of Austin, city of Stan Marcos in Texas. And also commercial development, working as, as a planner to design some corporate headquarters, industrial parks, just the general layouts to then be developed further. I've worked in and out of architecture offices as well, so I'm very familiar with architectural design. I think my experience actually is a little different that I have, you know, I've detailed, I joke that I detailed doorknobs up to, you know, several thousand acres, which a lot of people don't, don't get to do or don't have to do, but I just, I've experienced architecture from conceptual design to the entire setting to a regional plan in, in past professional experience.
What is your current position?
I am currently a project manager for Jones Lang La Salle. I work for one of the corporate clients doing construction project management. So we do renovations of, of Bank of America locations throughout the, the region.
Oh, I see. Okay. So your particular responsibility is for B of A renovation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, customer Cooper.
All right. Tom, planning commissioners may have a diverse range of personalities and opinions. Please describe your approach to dealing with fellow commissioners and how you might handle a disagreement over a project.
Well, I think it's no different than any other situation. It's attempting to understand the person's perspective going into conversation, trying to listen, not just convince someone, something else. I think it, it's a situation that definitely calls for a rational conversation. And then to me, that's from understanding someone's perspective, someone's experience and understanding why, you know, as well as explaining why we both feel the way we do about a certain question.
All right, customer Monroe.
Um, so I, before I get there, I do, I, I have a, again, a follow-up question. I'm curious, can you give an example of a place where you've had a disagreement and how it's been resolved? And then after that, I'll ask the real question.
You know, there, there are often disagreements in design offices that I've worked in. Sometimes designers can be very, you know, we can always be very opinionated and sometimes have a little too much ego, but for example, there was a question at a firm I was working at about the layout or the design of, of the pattern on a wall. And we really just, you know, honestly, in that situation, it came down to my boss making the decision. He had the authority in that case. But otherwise, it would just be a matter of, of working through the best. I'm, I'm happy to admit when I'm wrong. I'm happy to learn from those situations. And that's, that's all I know we can do.
Okay. All right. And then this is a question about time commitment. You know, how, what do you, what's your understanding of that time commitment needed to serve on the planning commission? And how do you feel you'd be able to meet that commitment?
Well, I mean, my understanding is obviously there are two meetings a month and from what I saw, there are several hours typically. Obviously, there's also some background prep time to understand the items that are being discussed. Whether that, it sounded like those emails come out the day before or the day of. You know, my work thankfully is fairly flexible and also does not tend to have too many emergency situations. It's, it's important work, but it's not, it's clearly not life or death. The work on this commission would be very important to me and I would, I would certainly put those hours into it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so all things considered, all things being equal, why should we select you?
It's a good question. I'm fairly confident that my experience is pretty unique to most professionals and probably fairly unique to the applicants just by numbers. I am very excited about this opportunity to use these, this experience I have to contribute to in a positive way to Livermore. I haven't lived here that long, but my, my roots are taking shape here. My fiance has been here for several generations. And I'm really, I'm really excited about this as an opportunity to use, use my talents for, for something good.
All right, thank you. Mayor Alex.
Okay, and the last one is, do you have any questions for us?
I was, I'm curious, I guess, how you, you all see the role of the, the planning commission or, and also I guess more specifically, what do you, what are you looking for as far as an ideal candidate for the, for the commission?
All right. Which ones of us wants to answer that one?
Your job is to make the council's job easier.
I, I think, yeah, I mean, for sure. And we always say to the attorney to keep us out of jail, but what we, I, what I would say is, I think, you know, given, you know, the answers to the questions, you know, we, and I was on the planning commission myself, you know, a long ago, is that, you know, we have a bunch of rules about how things should be developed and the planning commission has to make sure we follow them, but also where they're not specific, you know, point out where things need to be better. And so there is some latitude, but, but primarily it's to make sure that the, the projects meet the rules. And then as we think about in the future, maybe changing the rules or weighing in on that, that's the way I see it. But much of what you answered in terms of the role, I think, is my understanding of what the job is. And as you said, you've been on the, on the other side of it. Anybody else want to answer?
I would just add that I appreciate, I think we all spend time reading the minutes from planning commission meetings, particularly if we have a decision to make on an item that's coming to us. And it's always been valuable to me in terms of the questions and particularly the expertise, the broad expertise on the planning commission. And folks there bring different points of view and ask a very important insightful questions of the applicants. And so being able to bring that kind of point of view and being willing to ask pointed questions and not being afraid to ask for a developer, for example, to change something or add something, I think are all important in terms of at least my preparation for an item that comes to us at city council.
And I would say, I, what I'm looking for, I, so first of all, yes, to what everyone else has said. In addition, I would say that the advisory piece of this role is really important. That advisory meaning, I, this is sort of the one word that sums up what I think everyone else has said, which is that your job isn't to make policy, your job is to advise on it. But that means that you have to understand what the rules are that you're working under and abide by those. You have to negotiate between the people who are coming to you, the developers who are coming to you. You have to listen to the public. And then you have to give your best advice to us, which also includes your own sensibility and your own knowledge. So you have the one, the one word advisory.
Even simpler, I, I rely on the planning commission to divet staff's work, developers' work and give us a distilled result of what they feel we should do with a certain development. And it's worked for me so far, reading the minutes.
Well, I think the way that I always defined it is that the planning commission determines whether or not it can be built, meeting the codes and standards. The city council decides whether it should be built and that's based on the politics behind it. But that's, that's extremely simplified.
But I think we also see the planning commissioners will weigh in on the should as well. And I think maybe what Trish was getting to is, you know, making sure the person speaks up along those lines. You know, I build on what the others have said and just note in the decade I've been around, I think that the council has only reversed the planning commission, you know, three or four times. But it's on one of these should things. So it's what council member Coomer pointed out, really rely on the planning commission to do the heavy lifting and to point out things that we should, we should look at. So that's my sense is that the planning commission, more than any other part of us, really determines how this place looks. I think you alluded to that as well.
All right. Well, very good. Mr. Cox, thank you very much. Certainly appreciate your time this evening.
See if I can go live here. Ah, look at that.
There you are.
All of you. Hello. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Bye.
All right. Next is Stephen Wild.
We have 10 minutes to go, so.
Well, we'll see. Do we know who zero seven six two is?
We do not.
Okay.
I get some more paper and when I hear something happening, I'll come back.
Okay, very good. Good heavens, I'm the only one live. Oh, there is.
You feel left out?
You feel left out?
Not at all. Not at all.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to go back to this. Why are we deciding on the 23rd? I went back to the last time we did planning commission and first of all, when I look at the agenda, it doesn't say we're not deciding tonight. So I'm like, I I thought I was like, what did I miss? And I'm still wondering, what did I miss?
Well, we have.
It was in the memo from staff.
We have the city attorney on the line.
What did I miss?
You didn't read the memo.
Okay, could somebody please take it, take care of the Yeah, we got a problem.
So this is Jason Collier, city attorney, reviewing the staff report before you. It does state that the interviews will be conducted today. The recommended action says appointment is scheduled to be made at the November 23, 2020 meeting, and that is also as part of the discussion. So the way it was structured here today is that you will interview the candidates. You could probably within this engage in your debate, but in your discussion, review those individuals, but the actual appointment would occur at your meeting on the 23rd. One of the reasons is in the past, you would invite the candidates who were not currently being interviewed to wait in the lobby. And then you would interview each candidate in turn. Obviously, that presents certain challenges for your platform here today being on Zoom. At the conclusion of the interviews, again, the candidates would exit, you vetted your applications and the candidates and then select. Then you would have the opportunity to re-invite those individuals back into the room to discuss or to learn about the decision or to view that decision. Here in that presented certain challenges as the candidates are exiting the meeting, you would have to have a way to recall them to then come back in at the conclusion of the interviews to view and participate in the decision-making process that you have then undergo. Staff recommended rather than doing that all in one evening, to then have the appointment occur at a future date.
Excuse me, Jason?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We have some people logging in and putting inappropriate comments up in our Q and A.
Yeah, they sure are.
Yeah, they are.
Oh, wow.
I have removed two individuals, but they are logging in under different names and posting inappropriate.
This is really quite sad because we're trying to conduct the business of the city. And it's one thing to be a part of the process and we invite people to be part of the process. But it's quite another to deliberately try to derail that process. And in in my mind, it's very counterproductive.
If we can just keep removing them quickly.
That is correct. So that's unfortunate, Marie, but please continue your process of excluding those or removing those. Comments are not geared towards the discussion and are obviously clearly made to incite and to be offensive. But back to your question, Trish, that is why the process was decided upon today in our current COVID world, working through Zoom.
Thanks. Sorry to have, sorry to have literally missed the memo.
That's all right. But again, these are, these are our strange times and we need to, that's why, you know, we try to balance this process to allow people to to be part of the deliberations. And as as Jason pointed out, rather than having sit off to the side for an hour and a half, they get brought in. This is just to be an easier way to make it, make it all work.
Okay, all right. Well, good, good to know. I I was, I was racking my brains, trying to figure out where to go, had gone. I did go back and look at a couple of things in between and yeah, okay, thank you. You've helped a lot.
All right, so we're waiting for Mr. Wild.
Mr. Wild has joined us. I can bring him over if you're ready.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Before you do that, I have, I have a suggestion, which is, can you just get rid of the Q and A? That that might actually help with the, if we have any other intruders.
We're looking for a way if we can do that mid-meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, are you ready for me to bring him over?
Bringing Mr. Wild over. Good evening, Mr. Wild.
How you doing?
I'm doing great. How about yourself?
I'm doing really well, thank you.
Love seeing all the books.
Look at that. I mean, it looks like we're having a book contest. I think Mayor-elect Werner wins.
Well, could be. Yes, I've got Zoom calls all day today and it's just been amazing, all the books behind us. So thank you for for zooming in tonight and thank you for filling out the application to for consideration for the planning commission. Certainly appreciate the the time and effort that you've taken. So with that, let me just start off by saying or by asking, what do you see as the primary responsibility of the planning commission?
Well, first, let me say, I I appreciate very much the opportunity to to meet with you all and for just the process that allows citizens to be a part of of the decision-making of the city. You know, as I've understood it, the planning commission's primary objective is to implement, I suppose, the the general plan, making sure that that the general plan is adhered to and ultimately then looking at different development codes and design standards that are in line with the law and with the preferences of the citizens and the community. And as I've talked to people and tried to understand that role, it would seem as though that role sort of has maybe two or three functions to it. One has to do with where it's given delegated authority, making decisions as it pertains to that plan. Sometimes it would seem as though the planning commission serves as an advisory function to the city council to make sure that it gives its perspective, maybe vetting some of the issues and thinking through some things, but makes recommendations for certain decisions that the city council would make and doing so on behalf of the citizens and then also providing some sort of advising as it relates to different policies that the council is considering. That's trying to make decisions for the for the benefit of our city and our community.
Okay. My question is, what's your understanding of the city council's goals and priorities? And how do these help inform the work of the planning commission?
Well, my understanding of the goals and priorities, it was sort of fun reading through, you know, the general plan itself and those different elements. And I was fascinated to see some of the state required elements and then some of the elements that that the council in years past has taken on with respect to economic development and climate change and sort of, I think the other one was community character, I think, was maybe the third that sort of stood out as non-state mandated, but but city desired elements of that plan. And so it would seem to me that the the goal of the city council is to adhere to the, to sort of adhere to the plan, the urban growth boundary and some of the values that have historically been laid out by by the leadership of the city. And and at the same time, balance that with some of the emerging challenges and opportunities with respect to a region that's growing and a city that's growing and balancing the economic possibilities with the the opportunities to maintain some of the unique characteristics and qualities of our community.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, Steve. Good evening.
How you doing, Bob?
I'm doing just fine, thank you. What do you perceive to be the primary planning issues facing the community over the next few years?
Well, I mean, I think there's some that I've been sort of following that pertain to density of housing. I mean, I was, I've been intrigued to follow the sort of Isabel plan, that neighborhood over there on the other side of 580 that that's trying to balance both growth, but growth with with sort of wisdom that sort of is is dealing with infrastructure and transportation as a part of that. I think the challenges have to do with rising costs of housing and how do you how do you both recognize rising costs, but also create affordable possibilities for community members here? I think that the there are certain things that I'm not as familiar with. I think you probably saw from my application that my experience is not in city planning per se. I'm not a, I'm not an architect or any of those things.
This is a higher calling.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I I have a, I love this community. I love this city and I have a vested interest in it maintaining what I've come to appreciate and value in it. And so the challenges, I think, are how do you, how do you balance that in a, in a region that's changing so dramatically? I think that COVID-19 is presenting some really unique challenges as it pertains to the economics of the city. And I think that you've got a regional, a regional uniqueness to Livermore and values of Livermore that aren't shared by every community in the valley. And and I think there's some some collateral consequences that probably the council has to deal with quite frequently with respect to growth and how does Livermore both hold on to its values and characteristics with respect to growth in a region that's pretty dynamic and in an economy that's changing every day. And in a community that probably has some opinions on that. I'm just guessing that from time to time, you hear from some people that might have some thoughts on that.
Never.
Never.
I I actually wanted to, I I got a little sidetracked by that last we ever hear for people, but when you think about how you said that we were unique, what compared to some of the other areas, could you be more, could you say, spell out that uniqueness a little bit more? What are the characteristics that make us unique?
Yeah, so I I guess I would say I want to make sure that, you know, when I say that, I I'm talking about my experience and perspective. I I haven't, I don't want to pretend like I've done research on this because I haven't. But I just say, as someone who's lived here for 11 years now, I've appreciated a commitment to the urban growth boundary. I've I've appreciated the commitment that this community seems to have had for generations to to grow wisely. I understand that there's some, there's, there's likely some unknown difficulties with that. And I I don't understand how the pacing works. And when you, what you say yes to, what you say no to, I would imagine that'd be a part of my learning curve. But the uniqueness, I think, that Livermore brings to it is that there are some, there's some shared values that I believe we have as a community. I know, I know the mayor's been really instrumental in tapping into that with his commitment to volunteerism. I think that there's a, there's an ethos of our community that that is unique in this valley as it pertains to not just the the sort of relational community that exists here, but also the commitment to maintaining some of the characteristics. It's why I was really pleased to learn about sort of these different working documents that you all are guided by in terms of the general plan and the development codes and the design guidelines that that there's some real thought put into maintaining growth that doesn't sacrifice that history and that culture and that community, but also doesn't stifle it such that it can't change and and morph into an emerging community. And so I think that that's what I mean by uniqueness. It it seems like there's, since I've been here at least, there haven't been drastic decisions that have fundamentally altered some of those core values of this community that that from an outsider's perspective seem to be taking place in other places.
Okay, thanks.
You kind of answered the first half of this question, but I'm going to ask it again. It's my question to read here. So what are some of the unique characteristics that helped to define Livermore? And what is the commissioner's role in preserving or enhancing these design defining features?
Yeah, I I actually, so I, somebody might need to put a timer on me on this one because I don't want to talk too long. But I did my, my doctoral project in part was on this and it's, it was a fascination when I got here that that there are sort of from, again, when I got here in 2009, almost these three converging communities and economies that find themselves here. One in sort of the historical origins of that agricultural and for lack of a better word, cowboy history. Two then was that second wave of development that was really predicated and the catalyst, perhaps that being the lab and all that unfolded as that came here. And then three was the emerging growth of the Silicon Valley and the Bay Area and how Livermore then sort of asserted itself as a as a commuter community for that larger Bay Area economy. And so for me, I I think that part of what I think is so unique about Livermore is that it's trying to maintain those things and and hold those things in a in a shared value. And I think that it creates a lot of nuance and and sort of a lovely texture of who we are as a people, right? I think that also creates some challenges is because there's some, there's some distinct differences between what people think that probably should and shouldn't look like as it pertains to the community's development. And so for me, my understanding of the planning commission is is that my role is to be one of listener and learner and being really open to the people of this community. I think one of the things that I bring with me is a unique relational network. I've been pretty active in the community in my time here, not just vocationally, but as my wife and I have raised our family, I've pretty, I've immersed myself pretty deeply into to the community. And as such, I just, I think that there's a real imperative for commissioners to to set aside personal preferences and really be conduits to the community's values and interests. And and so I think that would be how the commission, where it's, I mean, again, at the, I might sound, this might be wrong because I I'm not as experienced with this as all of you are, but what I've sensed from
There are no wrong answers.
Well, but in my experience with the commission and my reading about the commission, there are certain things that seem like they're pretty black and white, right? There's, there's a plan, there's codes, and there's a legality to the commissioners, the commission's role that I don't want to say it's always straightforward, but it seems like it's pretty straightforward. I mean, the the nuance of this comes when people are wanting to make exceptions to that plan or deviate from code or design standards. And that's where I think the commissioner's role is to to be really open and to not come in with predetermined conclusions prior to hearing information and perspectives on that. And so the commission's role is really to ensure that the citizens' desires are are maintained and executed.
Thank you.
Mr. Monroe.
And I'm not on mute, so I don't have to take myself off. Downtown, what are your thoughts about the continued development of downtown and what issues exist? And what improvements may be desirable?
Do you mean downtown as it currently is? Or do you mean downtown like the plan and the the sort of moving forward with that plan that was recently freed to move forward?
You know, all of the above, however you'd like to approach this. The question, as as we've stated, it reads about about downtown.
Yes, so again, maybe I'll, maybe I'll take a stab at it from two perspectives. One would be as a citizen of Livermore, I love it. I love what it is. I love what it's becoming. I love the way in which it's becoming, what it's becoming. I I've just appreciated the tenacity of people to persevere through a not easy process to to allow it to be developed. And as a citizen, I just applaud you all and the many who put tireless numbers of hours into kind of stealing the thunder away from every other community in the valley. I mean, I I have friends of mine that where they want to be is downtown Livermore. And I think that's a statement to just the
Smart people.
The enthusiasm, the friendliness. And so as a citizen of this community, two thumbs up. As a commissioner, which maybe is the more important part of the question. You know, I I just, I I have appreciated, like I said, the the thoughtfulness of the process. I'm a big process person. And so I I love that the downtown is what it is and I'm grateful that it's moving forward to be developed. I don't have sort of generational frustration that some do with, I never saw the lucky that became the empty parking lot behind the L house. And so I don't, I don't like pull out my hair every time I see it and go, how come that's still there? That's always what I've seen. But I'll tell you that I'm just delighted that it's being developed and and I I'm a big proponent of the plan that was approved and is being implemented right now. I think, though, that as a commissioner, one of my jobs would be to provide feedback little things. And and I think what I'm hearing, Trish, is a willingness to critique. I would say a critique of what's going on downtown is I think that the, I think that the the current, it's not a part of that city downtown plan. My understanding is what's on the west side of L Street at first. I think right now there's a lot of unnecessary anxiety that the citizens of this community are feeling because they feel as though there's a cement block being put in down there. And I don't think many people have stopped to look at the sort of postage stamp drawing that's on the corner that's trying to help alleviate their concerns that it's not going to be a big cement block. Help alleviate their concerns that it's not going to be a big cement block, but there's in fact. Another phase of development that's going to cover that up at some point. And from the road, you're not going to see a four story parking structure. And I just think that a critique might be that there's a way in which the community can be informed. About how awesome it's going to turn out. And there doesn't need to be any unnecessary anxiety between here and there. Now, I'm also a leader of an organization that regularly communicates to its constituents. Who regularly say, we didn't know what was going on, who then regularly points them to the seven different places where we told them what's going on. So I am not at all naive. To the efforts that I'm sure have been made to assure. We citizens that it's not going to be just a cement square in the middle of that block. But, but those are the types of things that I think can be improved is that. There is, I think. A uniquely robust enthusiasm for that downtown. To move forward and to be continued. And I, I just think that that's. In the midst of times where there's not as much to celebrate as we might wish we could celebrate, I would look to celebrate that as often as possible.
All right, thank you. And I do, I do, nothing to do with the actual answer, but I really appreciate the little riff on the communication piece.
Well, it's an easy riff, right? That, like, I, I actually, I would poke fun at myself because. The people who don't always know, like myself right now, because you all are much more knowledgeable. The people who don't always know, we just, all you got to do is critique the communication because you can always say you could communicate better. The easiest thing in the world is to challenge the communication. The, the better response, if I were you would be, Steve, you should take on more responsibility and become better informed as a citizen. And I would say. Very well, very well said.
Well, I, I believe that that comment has been made by certain members of, of this body. Anyway. Back to you, Mayor.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so how would you meet the community's goals? In reviewing the site design and architecture of a new development proposal?
Well, obviously there's a part of what I would need to do with that, Mr. Mayor, that would recognize that. Obviously I have a, I have a learning curve here, right? Which is one that would need to. I, I'd need to first educate myself on the general plan, on the development codes, on the design guidelines and standards, right? So. There's a, there's a homework learning curve that I would need to do and, and I, I'm not. I would humbly say, and I'm pretty confident I'd be able to do that fairly quickly. So that then when you talk about the community's goals and the, the council's goals and some of these other things, then I think. If it's the community's goals that I'm seeking to meet, I need to really understand what those goals are and then. Provide an opportunity for me to likely interact with and, and hear and understand not just the words that are printed. Because as far as I know, I've never, unless there's a, a, a community goal planning meeting, I'm assuming you're talking about. The city council's goals, which are sort of the community's goals that are established by the council, or are you talking about something else? They're on mute. Sounds like me preaching, right? My lips are moving, but there's no words coming out.
That's right, yeah. Welcome to twenty twenty. Well, I think it's more the, the community's goals as set down in the, in the general plan. So we're talking not necessarily the people, but the, the city itself.
Yeah, so you're talking about the formal, right, okay, the, the sort of governmental goals as, as approved by in the process that's like sort of implemented by the city council and. And so for me, I think, I think it's really learning and familiarizing myself with those, with that plan. I mean, I've read the plan. But if you were, I don't know if I'd be able to pass a quiz on the, on the plan right now. I mean. I know there's fourteen elements and I know some of those, those things that are unique to the city of Livermore's plan as opposed to the state mandates for elements. So. I, I just think that the commission, like I said earlier. It would seem to me that, that the commission's work is straightforward when. You know, if, if a part of the plan says it's, you know. Dense resident, it's zoned for residential and somebody wants to use it for residential. I mean, that seems pretty straightforward to me that, that the plan's already stated what its intended purpose is. And as long as the person that wants to develop that is going to adhere to the. The development code and the design standards that, that we as a city have agreed upon, seems pretty straightforward. I, it seems to me. That the more nuanced conversation is when people are trying to. To either make, when they want to sort of deviate from that, or they want you to make. What, I don't know what the word would be, but they want you to make an exception to the plan. And that's where I think then the commissioner's responsibility is to come without predetermined. Opinions and really tries to step back and understand the bigger picture of what the. The larger, maybe even, I don't want to say historical in terms of eighteen sixty-nine historical, but the larger historical. Sort of ethos is of the community.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mayor elect.
Okay, and building on that, you mentioned the general plan. Could you identify some of the other plans, codes and. Standards the city uses to regulate development? And the role of these documents in the review process?
Uh, yeah, I can try to. I mean, I think certainly the general plan, and again, my understanding is that the general plan is more of a policy document and that the development codes would be more of an implementing. Document, right? The development codes being, you know. You know, you can't build a ten by ten building on a ten by ten piece of land, right? So. How do you make sure that, that those easements are being adhered to and that? And that what people are, are wanting to build fits within the codes of, of, of that, of that development code. So. Again, probably depending on where it's zoned, how far you're able to get to this, you know, how far can you, can you get to the street, you know, how? How, how much of a, of a sort of footprint can you make on a particular parcel, depending on, on what the plan says it can be. Developed as. And so. I don't know if those are the types of codes you're talking about, if there's different documents. My, I mean, my understanding is there's, there's three documents, right? There's the general plan, there's the development code, and then there's sort of. Almost an aesthetics document that talks about design guidelines and standards.
Okay, great. That's good.
Congressman Carlin.
Thank you. So Steve, what experience do you have that has prepared you? If selected to serve on the planning commission?
Well. I, I think probably the, the experience that, I mean, I could, I could tell you the experience that I've had that I laid out in that application, right? I've certainly led organizations that have gone through the process as. As businesses, since the church that I'm currently serving is zoned in the downtown area. And so we adhere to that. And I've done capital campaigns and I've, I've been the president of the Little League here in town where we did capital campaigns and worked with the. School district and L R P D on some of the details of what we can and can't do, and how do we adhere to OSHA and other things. I, I think that, that for me, probably the catalyst for my wanting to be a part of it is also sort of reflects maybe what I, I believe a lot of the. Unique gifts that I bring to the position is that. I think that sort of my, my love for this community, my desire to invest and sort of having eleven years of investing myself into. Things that I believe strengthen this community. I have a vested interest in maintaining. The community that, that my family has benefited from. And, and I think that, that within a role of planning commissioner that's trying to. Implement the desires of the, of the citizens of this community, I, I have a pretty wide and deep relational network. Vocationally, I think I do. Personally, I think I do. Volunteer wise, I've been a part of. The board of almost every youth sport here in, in Livermore at some point, some for many, many years. And so, you know, I think that, that may be a piece of what my experience is that I bring is. I have a lot of experience facilitating divergent perspectives and trying to build consensus without people feeling. As though they've been left behind or not heard. And I think that. You know, in, in making city decisions where. My sense is that very few decisions have a hundred percent approval. That I have a real value. I really truly value and appreciate. The interaction and the conversation and the exchanging of ideas and. The way in which my perspective both can inform someone else's, but also be shaped by and changed by someone else's. And so. I think the, the sort of organizational experience I've had. Is right in line with what I perceive to be the role of someone who serves the city. Is that I oftentimes have facilitated a process that I'm asked to set aside my own. Personal agenda to seek the collective good. And, and I would say one of my highest commitments in, in vocational ministry and in the organizations that I've been a part of is. Always seeking the common good.
Congressman Cooper.
All right, well. You've kind of touched on this. Planning commissioners have a diverse. Let me brighten my light, kind of a diversity of, of, of opinions and. Personalities. And describe your approach to dealing with. Those commissioners and how you might handle a disagreement over a project.
Well, yeah, so I think, yeah, that's a great question for what I was just saying, and that is. You know, I, I, I have been blessed in my life to be surrounded by a lot of people who at times knew a lot more than I did. And so. I'm, I am indebted to the people whose perspective has informed mine. And so I think I bring. Even in disagreements, an appreciation and a value for the disagreement. I mean. A different perspective. At the worst case scenario for me of a different perspective is that it helps me reflect and clarify my own perspective. And, and if I end that disagreement. Believing the same thing, thinking the same thing, wanting to endorse or vote for the same thing. I have a real appreciation for the perspective that, that challenges me to reflect on the why. I will, I would say that most frequently disagreements, at the very least, adjust my perspective because. Most disagreements I find, even the perspective that I, I don't agree to, it does open my mind to a broader perspective. And an appreciation for what I believe is the well-intended articulation of a different perspective. You know, the people that don't see things the way that I do. I would say more often than not, feel very strongly with good intentions. Believe what they believe for good reasons. And so. I value that and, and they're no different than I am. They may, they may see the elephant's ear while I'm holding the elephant's trunk. But I think we both can learn something about the elephant. And so. I really, I really actually am engaged by and sort of energized by conversations where. Where assumptions are challenged, where new information is, is brought into the discussion. Where preconceived ideas are questioned. I just think that that ultimately is a process that leads to better decisions.
Great, thank you.
Senator Monroe.
All right. Time commitment. You're a busy man. How are you going to make it all work? What is the time commitment that you, you, how do you understand the time commitment and how do you make it happen?
Well, I, I will jokingly say, Trish, that I'm not as busy as I was a number of years ago, since my two oldest sons are off in college and. And, and my youngest son is in high school, which means that. As you saw in my application, I once, I once spent a lot of time coaching and being involved with youth sports. And now I'm just a dad that sits in the bleachers for one son while two are out doing something else. So. I, I would say that my understanding of the time commitment is obviously the two meetings that take place every month and all the preparation that would need to go into that. I, I will, I will say that I'm, I'm really blessed to, to serve at a church that values the community and community participation and has. Been very supportive of my volunteer service and is very supportive of my. Applying to be considered for planning commission. And in fact, sort of allocates a part of my time to be involved in the community in these types of ways. And so. I think the combination of my family being in a different place and having, having very quickly gone from three sons living at home to one son living at home. And what has at times been a halftime job of volunteering in Little League and. The homeless refuge and some of the other things that I've been volunteering and those commitments no longer being what they were. I, I have probably more time than you all will need. Which means my golf game will get better too. So it could be a win-win.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
So. You've elaborated quite a bit tonight, but final question from me is, so why should we select you for the position?
Well, I, I would say, I don't know if you should select me for the position. I, I don't know who you're talking to and, and it's very possible that there's multiple candidates that are much more qualified than I am. And. And if that's the case, I would, I would encourage you to do that. If I'm, if, if I am the qualified one, I think that the reason I would select me is that. I certainly, I certainly have a track record and I don't think anyone would suggest that. You'd be getting someone who doesn't love this community and doesn't want to pour himself into making it better. I was just today, I had to do a polygraph test because I'm. In the process of being background checked to be a chaplain for the Livermore Police Department. And the guy there, I was talking and he was saying, and I was telling him about this meeting, and this is probably a longer story because I use too many words sometimes. But I, he was asking why I would want to be a part of this. And my answer was, I just, I love this community. I really, really love this community. And I think why you should choose me if. If I am in fact, the best fit for what you all are looking for is. You'll get someone who has a passion for this community, who is. Who is open to the collective's desires, right? That I want to do what's best for the community. I think you'll get someone who has a pretty unique relational network and I think can help. Create avenues of communication and connection to the community as it, as it pertains to. Hearing and having my finger on the pulse of where people are and what people are thinking. And. I'm hugely engaged in the process of governing. I just find it. I'm a little weird in this sense, but I just find it really riveting and. Energizing to be involved in the, the process of, of governing and making decisions and whether that's in the church that I serve or the Little League board that I led or. Decisions that, that relate to the city. I, I just think that. When men and women who, who love something and have a passion to, to make things better come together, that's. That's when really remarkable things can happen in communities can really grow and, and experience a sense of strength. And that's what I want to be a part of. And. I think I could bring that enthusiasm. And creativity to the planning commission's work.
Great, thank you.
Great. So yeah, now it's a flip it around. Do you have any questions for us?
Yes, I mean, maybe the, I, I could probably have a lot, but one would be as a city council, I'd love to, I'd love for you to share. How you've experienced planning commissioners. Really be an asset to your work and decision-making on the city council. And if there's any qualities or aspects of a commissioner and no names please. That. Who's, whose contribution was not helpful to the governing process and decision-making of the city council.
Oh, go ahead.
You go ahead.
As I was going to say, we frequently look at the, as I said many times, the planning commission determines whether it can be built. The city council determines whether it should be built based on the politics, but to ensure that we. All of us on the council look to the planning commission as they vet a project to see. How it is, is congruent with the, the, the planning, the development, the general plan, the codes, the standards, all of those things together. They're the ones that really see how that fits and within the community. And so we frequently look to the, to the planning commission. For their insights on a particular project. Anyone else want to weigh in on that?
I'll just say that.
Nailed it.
But Bob, go ahead, Bob.
No, I, I think I, full agreement with the mayor. I think you just, you know, what I look for is a. A, a vetting of the project developer, the staff reports, everything before distilling it into something that we can understand. And, and then make a decision as to what's best for the city.
Yeah, there's, it's come up before, it's a lot of heavy lifting. I mean, there, the council packages are daunting. But the planning commission packages are even more so with the amount of effort that it takes to really go through them and. Make sure everything's being followed that it should be. Plus, being concerned enough. To point out, well, maybe everything meets exactly. to point out, well, maybe, uh, everything meets exactly the, uh, what's required, but perhaps something could be better. So it's that, doing the, the basic work plus being, uh, cognizant enough of everything to say, well, you know, think about this as well.
Right.
But the, uh, I pointed out in, in the years I've been around, the decade, uh, that the planning commission's work is relied on, except for maybe three or four times in that period, and that was a political thing for the most part.
Yeah, very good. Well, again, thank you very much for your time tonight. Certainly appreciate that. Uh, and, uh, again, thank you very much for, for, for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Bye.
Right.
All right. So next is Elaine. We ran a little bit over on that one.
Not too bad.
Well, we started 10 minutes early.
Well, but, you know, we had this, we had the slack time.
Yeah, we did. That's a, so this worked out well.
Mayor, Ms. LaSalle has joined us. Would you like me to move her over?
Please. Hello Elaine, welcome. You're still, still migrating over here. Or you're on mute.
There we go. Perfect. Thanks.
There we are.
Hey, how are you?
How are you doing?
I'm doing great. Hello, Council.
Hello.
Good evening. How are all of you?
We're here. We're doing well.
I know. This is difficult, isn't it?
It's strange. It really is.
I get it. I get it.
So great. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. Uh, certainly appreciate your time and filling out the application and, uh, uh, offering to, uh, be interviewed tonight to step up to volunteer. Uh, so cutting right to the chase, uh, what do you see as the primary responsibility, uh, of a planning commission?
It's very easy. I did it for 12 years for the Alameda County Planning Commission. It's making the council's job easier. It's weeding through, um, hi, I was on the city council too. It's weeding through the public, um, trying to figure it out. Try to get as, as close to a unanimous decision on something. So when we hand it to you, we've worked through a lot for you. Um, that's, that's what I see the planning commission's job as being.
Great. Thank you.
Great. So, uh, I'm Bob Warner.
Hello, Bob. How are you? Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so my question is, what is your understanding of the city council's goals and priorities? And how do these help inform the work of the planning commission?
Well, the city council is the direction. The planning commission helps do the direction that the city council wants to go in. Um, when I was on the Fremont City Council, I, I was part of the general plan where we set what the goals were going to be, what land uses were going to be, et cetera. When I was on the Alameda County Planning Commission, um, I oversaw their general plan in Castro Valley and was able to say that some of your land, for example, they wanted to put no designation under any of their schools. And I said, you can't do that. All land must have some designation. So we worked with them and understood what their concern was, but worked with them to make sure that they had a viable general plan.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Christopher Curling.
Yes. Hi Elaine. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Thank you. What do you perceive to be the primary planning issues facing Livermore over the next few years?
Downtown, a hundred percent. Um, and also I would have to say lack of residential land. It, it's, it's being, it's being difficult on trying to keep the, the, the small town feel with a lot, a lot less, um, residential land to go on, but the downtown is going to be huge for the next few years. Um, and, and it's exciting to see how much it's, how fast it's going and how far it's become so far. So I, I think those are probably our two biggest issues right now.
Do you have some thoughts? I mean, I understand your point about, um, the lack of land for residential development. Do you have some ideas of how we might address that?
Um, I think we've done it in the downtown with your multi-use where you have housing on top and resi- um, retail on down below. Um, that's what we've, we're, we've been doing in San Leandro, San Lorenzo, um, and other unincorporated areas. So it allows us to go up a couple of stories with residential, but still have business down below. So we're not, we're not losing the integrity of what the land use was intended for.
But that's not, I mean, that works for the downtown, but that doesn't work.
You're right. You're absolutely correct. Um, and also you can do higher density when Bart comes in closer to Bart, we can do higher density there also. That's part of Alameda County's plan.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Christopher Coumber.
Before that, I just, I just wanted to check on, on one thing. You, you said when Bart comes in, I'm a little concerned about that since Bart isn't coming in. Would you like to say a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I, I know that, that at this point it is not coming in and for me, I am, it doesn't matter how I feel. Um, the fact is, is that it isn't coming in right now, but it's always been planned to come to Livermore. And I don't know how that's going to change down the line. But I do know that in the county, a- any homes, and if you look in Dublin and you look in Pleasanton, the density is much higher closer to Bart for that reason. So thank you. You're, you're absolutely correct. It is not coming to Livermore right now.
Well, good evening and thank you. Um, what are some of the unique characteristics that helped to define Livermore? And what is the commission's role in preserving or enhancing those defining features?
Some of the things I really like about the, first of all, I like the downtown and I like where it's going. But I, I can't be amiss in talking about the wineries we have in town. Um, they are, they bring in so many people to this, to this city. Um, and it, it's a, it's a a gentleness that we have as a, for, for Livermore. Um, and I can, I can remember, uh, the Four Corners Church wanting to move into the winery area when I was on the planning commission. And we as commissioners said, that is not an approved juice that, that can't go there. So I, I want to preserve that. I want to continue to keep that the way it is.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Christopher Monroe.
All right. Um, well, returning to, uh, uh, what seems to be a theme, um, the, uh, that's downtown. Um, wait, I'm trying to find the question. There we go. There's a specific question. Not your fault. Uh, what's your thoughts about the continued development of Liver, of, of downtown? Oh, for crying out loud. I'm sorry. This is spinning around on me. Uh, what, what, what issues do you see exist? And what improvements do you see that might be desirable? Um, and if you could frame that in terms of where we are now and where we're going as opposed to anything that may or may not have taken place in the past.
I, well, I will, I'll phrase it this way. The people of Livermore have spoken. They want the downtown plan, which I think is an excellent plan. I think bringing a hotel into the Livermore area was the number one reason why most people voted for the downtown plan. It, 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 it brings a vibrant to the downtown. Um, we frequently go out, my husband and I, for dinners. Over and over, people we take out to dinner from wherever, whatever city they are from, absolutely love the way our downtown is. How friendly it is, how accessible it is, how easy it is to get through. Um, and, and it's just over and over again, they are very pleased with it. Um, and I would say number one, that the people I talked with, why they voted for the Livermore plan was for the hotel. They were very excited about that.
Um, where do you see it going in the future?
The downtown?
Right. In addition to the hotel.
Oh, I get it. No, there, there's a whole Livermore plan and it, and I can see, um, I, I, you can see where the buildings are going right now with the multi-use in the downtown on the old Growth Brothers property. Um, you can see where things are, are, I mean, uh, Stockman Park has been opened. Um, so I, I, I think right now centralizing everything in the downtown has been an excellent, an excellent plan.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, okay. So how would you meet the community's goals, uh, in reviewing the site design and architecture of new development proposals?
So, usually you want to look at what is around the project that you're looking at. Um, I can remember when I was in city council, there was a very, um, kind of a, an older neighborhood and they wanted to put very contemporary buildings in. It was not going to mix with what was going on in that area. So I think, um, you have to, you have to look at what has been planned there, what works there, what it looks like. Um, city staff is amazing at helping say what they like and what they don't like. Um, and, and we can tweak that, but basically that's, I think you have to look at where it's going and see, does it fit or does it work there?
Okay. Good. Thank you.
And, uh, this, this should be pretty easy for you, but, uh, we have, please, please identify a few of the plans, codes, standards the city uses to regulate development and the role of these documents in the review process.
Oh, my gosh. Um, well, there's, there's tons. Um, every, every, well, what I had to use a lot when I was on the, I was on the Alameda County Planning Commission for 12 years. So when we went into, um, unincorporated areas, we had to look at measure D. When we went into, um, plant, it's site plans, it, it, it was, were we going to make a variance? Were we not? I, I, I don't know exactly what you're asking. I hope I'm answering it correctly.
Oh, sure. It was like the general plan, et cetera.
Oh, okay. Well, the general plan gives a piece, gives a designation to every single piece of property in the, in the city. So it tells you what, um, what, what can and can't be built there. If you're going to make a variance, you have to then make, make findings to be able to make a variance on it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Does that answer it for you?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think you've already, um, addressed some of this, but I'll ask it again because we're asking everybody the same questions as.
I don't care. I get that idea.
Okay. So tell us about your experience that has prepared you to serve if selected on the planning commission.
I was elected to, uh, the Fremont City Council in 1989. Um, served that. Um, and then I want to say it was 2005. I was on the Alameda Planning Commission for 12 years. Um, and, um, my, my purpose for being on it, first of all, I was working at the time as this, as a school teacher. I feel that, that if I can serve and I can help in any way, I like doing that. And so that was my purpose of doing that. Um, and we met twice a month on Tuesday nights in Hayward, California, and I had to get off, finish work, drive out there. But I loved it and I loved working with the planning commissioners mostly because we worked together as a team. We didn't see it as being political. We wanted to make it easier for the supervisors.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Christopher Coumber.
All right. Well, planning commissioners have a diverse range of personalities and opinions. Please describe your approach to dealing with commissioners, uh, fellow commissioners and how you might handle a disagreement over a project.
That's a very good question. And it happened a lot when I was on the, uh, planning commission. And what we tried to do is, um, I can remember several incidents, but one of the things I can remember is we would all try to meet the needs of what the commissioner was asking for. If we couldn't, for example, there was a, a, a situation in the wine country here about tents and so on. And I finally just said, I know you're all trying to make this work, but I'm never going to agree. And so we all agreed to disagree. And I, and I like working that way where we can all bend and try and make accommodations for everyone. But at some point I might not be able to, I might not be able to agree with it or another commissioner, right? And I like the idea of agree to disagree.
Okay. Thank you. Christopher Monroe.
Hey, uh, so the question, this question is about time commitment. What, how do you understand the time commitment? Uh, that's needed to serve on the planning commission. I, I know that this is a difficult question for you. Um, and how would you be able to meet that commitment?
So I was able to do it working full-time and I'm now retired. So, um, it, the time commitment is not a problem for me. Reading the, um, packets is, I have plenty of times, just my husband and I. So we're, I'm in a very different place in my life now. But I was able to do it working full-time.
And do you want to speak a little bit to, uh, your understanding of, of, uh, not just what, what your timing is, but to, uh, what the expectations of the job, our job is laid out.
The expectations are, I, I think virtually, well, I know you're, you're getting ready to go through a general plan. And I know that is a tremendous amount of work. Um, I know that, um, most land use issues come before the planning mission, before it gets to the city council. So the amount of time that is required, I can give, I, I have the time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, all things considered, after we've had this conversation for a moment, why should we pick you, uh, as a planning commissioner?
I want to make your jobs easy for you. I want to try and help you out as much as I can. Being in your shoes and on your side of the table, I know when you have disgruntled people walking in your door. And it's not pretty. And if we can alleviate some of that pressure for you, if I can take that pressure off for you, that is the, the reason, the only reason I put my application in.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And then the, the final one, do you have any questions for us?
Well, first of all, I, I admire all of you for, um, what you guys have had to go through this year. It's not easy. I get it. Um, I was talking to Scott Haggerty today and he was saying that a lot of the high schools right now are asking people to zoom in and ask their council members and supervisors questions for their civics classes. So I don't know if that's happening with you, but it is happening at the county level. So I just, I have really no questions. I just really kind of respect each and every one of you for what you've done and how you've stuck to your guns and you've done a great job.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a wonderful.
Time tonight. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Bye.
Bye bye. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
There we go.
Okay. And let's see.
You have 10 minutes again. Look at that.
Yeah. And succinct, succinct answers. Uh, Elizabeth Weber.
We have reached out to her mayor and she should be joining us shortly.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
So how's everyone doing?
Pardon me?
So how's everyone doing?
Think we're doing just great. We're getting ready to wind it up.
Yep.
How's Chicago?
Colder than it is there. Also, we had thunder and lightning and rain, rain, rain. Yes. I've been asked to bring it back, but unfortunately my luggage is full.
When do you fly back?
Not until the 29th. And I, I've already making, you know, it's, I'm buying my hazmat suit as we speak. No, just kidding. But, you know, I'm sort of in that mode. So.
I'll tell you, the coldest I've ever been and the biggest snowflakes I've ever seen was March in Chicago.
Which year? Which year?
Uh, it was, what that was probably 2007, 2008.
Okay. Let me, so I was, I was in college. So I mean, I grew up in, in Evanston and went to finish my university at Northwestern and graduated in 79. So the winters of 77, 78, 78, 79, the first one was the coldest, most bitter winter I'd ever experienced. And the second one was the snowiest. And then Dave and I got married and we came out to California and haven't looked back.
Right.
Now, anyone else have a story? I know we're being recorded, but so what?
I remember there's a political cartoon that I saw during that, that winter of 79. And it showed this car driving along and it said, well, I'm looking at the map and we should be really close to Chicago. And they're on top of the snow and the city of, the skyline is underneath the snow.
I swear that was, that was, I was like, I, I started college in, in California actually, and then went back to finish in Chicago. And I was like, I'm all about seasons. I love seasons. After that, it was like, I can live, I can live with a Mediterranean climate, really.
All right. So we're looking for Elizabeth Weber. Any relation?
No, but I thought, what are the chances of that? And Mayor, our phone caller 0762 is Mr. Stewart joining us tonight.
Mr. Stewart. Okay. Just to make sure we got somebody good.
So John, where do you see who else is participating and what screen?
Attendees. If you go down to participants, click on participants and then click on attendees.
Oh, down there on, no merge. I don't have, I don't have that on mine. Oh, up there. I got it.
Well, mine's, mine's down below. It says participants 14.
Yeah, I see that, but then I, I can't.
And then you, you click on that and then it opens up and you click on, just panelists on one side and attendees on the other.
Yeah. Oh, I got it. Okay. Got it.
Well, she's still got three minutes before she was actually scheduled to be on.
She was on for just a moment and then dropped off. So I imagine she's trying to get back in.
Could be like my phone.
Yeah.
Every time somebody calls me, it drops out after 10 seconds and then it stays on after that. It's the strangest thing. Well, there are other stranger things I imagine, but that's just weird. That's Kim's sense of humor. We all appreciate it. Oh, there we are. She's in the attendees.
Mayor, are you ready for me to bring her over?
Please do.
Hi.
Evening, Elizabeth. How are you tonight?
Good.
Good. Welcome aboard. Thank you for spending your evening with us greatly. Appreciate the time and effort that you spent filling out your application. And your willingness to volunteer to be interviewed, to potentially serve on the planning commission. So with that, let me go ahead and start off. And so what do you see as the primary responsibility of the planning commission?
I, based on what I've seen from meetings and what I've read, it's to help advise the city council about all the different zoning projects and development projects going on. And it's mostly just to give their two cents and insight and guidance, hopefully shorten the process for city council and all their decisions. Well, related to city planning, but.
Great. Thank you. Mayor-elect Werner.
Hello, welcome. So what, what's your understanding of the city council's goals and priorities? And how do these help inform the work of the planning commission?
I think the, the city council's priorities are to, they got a lot of different things, but when it comes to like the, the zoning and the planning, it's focusing on growth, but also balancing what citizens want to see in their city and what's required of them in our municipality, in our region, because obviously we need to, well, we're just growing because there's the population growth, but also because California has that housing shortage. So what's the balance of keeping Livermore's charm? But also making sure that we're keeping up with our housing and just to help the balance, I guess, you know, keeping citizens happy and healthy and safe. And yeah.
We're not going to make them happy.
That's, well, you'll make half of them happy and the other.
Councilmember Carling.
Thank you. Hi, Elizabeth. Good evening. How, what do you perceive to be the primary planning issues facing the Livermore community over the next few years?
Yeah. I think some of the biggest issues is definitely like making sure that we're building in enough of that low cost housing into our growth. Another thing is, you know, getting us connected to more transportation. I was, I'm excited that, you know, hopefully eventually we'll get onto that Tri-Valley. That real way that doesn't quite exist yet, but I think some, some money, some dreams, but you know, we'll get there and that's really exciting.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Coomer.
Good evening. What are some, what are some of the unique characteristics that helped to define Livermore? And what is a commission's role in preserving or enhancing those defining features?
Yeah. I think that one of the defining features of Livermore is that it is part of the Silicon Valley and yet kind of just enough detached. It's charming. And it has all those connections. And I know people like millennials my age are moving into the area because they want to stay connected. They want to be in the area, but they want something that's affordable. So there's going to be, continue to be a wave of millennials moving into the area. And I think they're all going to see what the people who here already see that it's charming, yet connected, just disconnected enough, like.
Okay. Councilmember Monroe.
All right. If you could speak a little bit to the downtown plan or the downtown project. Tell us your thoughts about the continued development of the downtown and what are the issues that exist? And what improvements, if any, do you think might be desirable?
Yeah, I think the downtown project is exciting. And in the midterm votes, when we all voted about basically reassuring that we wanted and really proved that people are, most people are excited. Like you said, like no one's fully going to be happy. But I think, you know, adding the extra, like parking there, that's good, especially since we're growing in our commercialism, like it's always been there, but people are starting to see that more with the wineries. But also I know that Ben Cat has always like brought in a lot of people from, not only from Tri-Valley, somewhat from South as well, South Bay. And having a second one, I could really only see like getting more of that attention. Obviously the issues are mostly in the, the growth and gonna have to watch that and gauge, because everyone has a different perspective on that. Some people want more housing there. Some people, people are already complaining about that park, like there's nothing to play in there. You're just like, it's peaceful. It's, but just gauging everyone's perspective and who's getting the most use out of it. And, but overall, it's an exciting project that we've got going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And you, with regard to the park, it's the first phase, people. Come on, be patient. We're getting there. It took us 58 years to get to this point and we're started. We'll get there. So, okay, I'm off my soapbox. So how would you meet the community's goals in reviewing the site design and architecture of new development proposals?
I think, you know, you review what comes in, just like the, the well, the project that's coming in off of Kinkan. You know, you got to make sure that it, it matches the motif and the vibe of Livermore and especially like whatever factor it's in. But we also have to give enough leniency in, in design and, and not overthink things. Cause development is super stagnated in California. I mean, I've done some work in Santa Clara County, which is a nightmare. It's not. But anyways. But yeah, just give two cents and make sure that it looks nice. It's keeping up with the, the standard that we have for Livermore and the charm, but not stagnating it through the process of adding a voice to it.
Could you help me understand what you mean by stagnating development?
Oh, I, I think it's just based off of my experience in working on the development end and just having nitpicky things about it. Obviously everyone's voice is important and we want to make sure that, you know, everything is legal and everything is beautiful. But to some degree, sometimes getting too nitty gritty, we slowed, we can slow down processes that don't need to be slow or that slow. Did that answer?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay, the next question is, could you identify the, the plans, codes and standards the city uses to regulate development? And the role of these documents in the review process?
So there are California state law that we have to follow. And then each city generally has their own municipal code, which further elaborates like standards or code history. And obviously most of that is for safety. Some of that is just for continuity and some of that is zoning, making sure that we are growing in the right ways and ways that are like consistent with the neighborhoods. I know that in, is it North Isabel, like a lot of lines have been shifting, but it's making sure that, you know, the neighborhood stays consistent, but also not overly like mixed with commercial and, you know. Yeah. Did that answer it? Or can you say the question one more time?
Sure. No, it was just, what are some of the, what are some of the documents, the, the actual that regulate how we build stuff?
Yeah, I guess it's mostly the municipal code and the interpretation of the municipal code.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you. So can you share with us your experience and how it has prepared you if selected to serve on the planning commission?
Currently my day job is I work as a team lead for a small development company. Most of my projects are in Washington state or in Santa Clara County. But I work a lot with architects, city planners, civil engineers. So I'm very familiar with like the processes. And yeah, that's my experience.
How long have you been with that company?
I've been doing that for two years now.
Great. Thank you.
Harbor Group.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Coomer.
All right. Planning commissioners may have a diverse range of personalities and opinions. Please determine your approach to dealing with some commissioners and, I'm sorry, with fellow commissioners and how you might handle a disagreement over a project.
So before working in development, I worked in law firms. And so I am very used to big personalities. Attorneys are very strong willed. But everyone comes from a point and perspective because of their experience and because of their knowledge about the city or their passion about it. And so you really got to take that into consideration. And maybe they're seeing what you're not seeing, or maybe they're seeing it from, you know, a different helpful perspective. So just taking it all in stride and valuing the differences that come with each member.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. So can you talk a little bit about the, your understanding of the time commitment that you need to serve on the planning commission? And then how would you be able to meet that time commitment?
So I know they meet twice a month and the meetings generally run over two hours. And I know that you get information beforehand, probably have to research that, read it. I know some members like to walk, I hear, walk the areas of the plan or whatever. My thoughts is that it's probably, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I would guess it's about 10 hours of research for every two hours that you're in meeting. And currently I work a four to hour work week and it would, you know, just be an after hours, like. And currently I work a four to hour work week and it would, you know, just be an after hours, like passion project essentially, and that's very realistic to build into my, my life schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And so all things considered, why should we select you?
I think I, I've noticed that most of the people on the council have lived in Livermore for 20 to 30 years. And I think it would be really helpful to have a fresh perspective. Like I've spoken before, like obviously there's a huge benefit to knowing the city backwards and forwards. But I think there's also a benefit from someone who is, I've been in the Bay my entire life and I am seeing Livermore with fresh eyes and I plan on being here for decades. And so I'd love to be a part of shaping the growth of the city. And I have, you know, some professional background in it and I'd love to use that towards bettering the city or, yeah, helping guide it.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. The final question is, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah. Um, so what is the actual time commitment?
It's, it's, you know, it's no more than 40 or 50 hours a week, you know, it's a, don't, no, it's just good. So from, from the, uh, the, the council perspective, yeah, it's huge. But I think you've got a pretty, uh, yeah, 10 hours for, for two. I think that's, uh, that's a pretty realistic. Mayor-elect, what are your, what are your thoughts on that since you were on the planning commission?
Well, it can vary. I mean, some of the packages can be quite large and, and detailed. It, it really depends on the load of the projects coming through. And recently we've, we've had some, and then the other thing is that we're going to be doing a general plan update. And that will be a major effort. And I would imagine that the planning commission will be, uh, participating in that as well.
Yeah. Some of the, uh, some of our packets that we've gotten will range 800 to 1,000 pages and we get those every two weeks. The most beastly was 1,500, but that was, that was a rarity. But, uh, yeah, packets of, uh, I said, 600, 800 pages are unusual.
Yeah. And I think, uh, if I could also say, on, on the city council, we, uh, generally deal with policy. And, and then there's a lot of interesting perspectives on that. But one of the things that the council relies on the planning commission is actually comparing uh, the specifics of the proposed project with all of the detailed rules that are found in the general plan, specific plan, design codes. And so it can be quite laborious actually to make sure that everything is done well. And the council relies on the planning commission to do that detailed work. And it's a, it can be quite, um, you know, I don't know if word is tedious, but it can, if you really have to get into the details and understand the rules and whether or not the project meets what is, uh, required. And then also what you were talking about in terms of making sure that it, it fits the general aesthetic of the, of the city. So there's a, a range of, does this fit? Which is kind of a qualitative gut feel to, does this actually match other rules?
This is the form basis owning and how the, uh, the project is proposed, meets the development code, the design standards, a general plan, all of those things together. So there you go. Well, great. Well, thank you so much for volunteering your time tonight. We certainly appreciate you taking the time to, to talk with us. And, uh, with that, thank you again for stepping up to volunteer and, uh, wishing the best. Have a good evening.
And, and I just have to add in, you know, we do have a council member coming on who is not this generation.
I know. That's exciting.
Yes, it is.
Everyone's perspective is great. And so it's just great to have.
No, no, I, I just, I couldn't resist. Thank you very much.
Oh, you could have, but you chose not to.
I rarely resist, you know.
That's right. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Elizabeth. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited that Brittany's coming on council. Come on.
And she's, she's, uh, zooming in with us tonight. She's watching. All right. So we have completed our interviews. And I guess we come back with our deliberations on the 23rd. Everybody's taken, uh, copious notes, I'm sure. Uh, and with that, uh, I will hand over to the, uh, city attorney to see if there's anything else that we need to do before we, conclude the proceedings this evening.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Longcalla. Looking at your agenda, you have completed your interview process. Let's do something procedural Marie would like to cover. I think you have reached the end of your agenda today.
Okay. Well, in that case, um, that's two, okay, so the vacancy, so the city staff recommends the city council interview the applicants for appointment to one vacancy of an unexpired and regular term ending March 1st, 2025. And with that, uh, I will adjourn to a regular city council meeting on November 23rd, 2020 at 7:00 PM, which is held virtually by Zoom and also carried, uh, by YouTube. And with that, thank you all very much for your participation tonight. And with that,